Through mostly, I mean, I know graduation is in mid-May usually, but the rest of the students go through the end of, around the end of May. So we generally have the month of June, the month of July, and two weeks or so in August. I struggle to see how we, I mean, I know you've got the dates here. It just doesn't quite make sense to me how this would be 13 weeks. I can see how the first one would be 15, but I wonder, that 13 week, that just doesn't quite seem right, but.
Sometimes that's the partial week, but the dates aren't correct.
Right. I. I also worry that if, I mean, we've taken such, it's taken a lot of coordination and effort to align the calendars as best we can between the two districts in order to help those 252 families. It, because while it's maybe 200, like you said, maybe 252 families now, as there may not be overlap now because none of the kids go to the high school, but you know, every year, obviously we have middle schoolers that move up to the high school and that becomes an issue. And if we were not to change our schedule, we're basically causing, we would be causing an extra long summer every single year for eighth graders. Because those eighth graders would be getting out then mid-May and not going back until. So you know, while it may, because the numbers you're putting here apply to the existing high schoolers. But if we have, since we are trying to align the curriculums and the, and we've taken efforts to try to not schedule conference days on the same days so that families who have both can attend both. That would, if we did not align our schedule, that would further, I think inconvenience families, which would be, I think, a big hardship for vacations, for conferences, for all the activities and all of that. So I think it would just be a matter of community outreach, public, you know, public relations on that to say this is, this is a short-term thing. If we're committed to making this only a three-year thing, unless every, you know, I guess if it's decided, we all decide we like the schedule, fine, but I would think that given the detriment, I think the biggest detriment is going to be the AP exams because that's going to significantly shorten the school year by about a month for those AP, the kids who are taking AP tests starting like the beginning of May. If they're not going, if they're going to school, that's cutting off the whole month of AP tests, but it's, if you know ahead of time, you can plan accordingly and you deal with it. But I could not see this being necessarily a long-term wanting to keep it that way because I think it does, it would ultimately start to impact student outcomes, but obviously we have to adjust and deal with construction necessities.
I think if we are looking into considering any change of calendar, we have to consider those parents that are working parents all the time. So we do have to either connect with the community and provide either daycare, you know, more summer programs, more library programs or whatnot, because those parents probably already have, you know, they have to go to work. So what can we do with those kids or with, you know, to help them, right? I don't see it as an issue now that we're getting it ahead of time to plan ahead, but definitely it's going to have to be a community type of outreach where we are helping and supporting each other. Because I know if not, we're going to have a lot of, you know, children that are unattended for many days.
At least referring them to options, providing them for them, we can refer them to things.
And even, I mean, provide economic support for some of them that might need some too. I mean, you have to consider all of it because maybe some parents will be able to pay for camp for some, but not all parents are able to pay for the camp or things like that where children are at a place for that many hours. Just considering options, but.
Would the, like, summer meals change to meet these summers too? Saying that there's a lot of families that depend on some of the free meals during the summer too. Would those services then change for these calendars?
Yes.
Like the free and reduced services?
Yes. Thank you.
But that, that's why I think it's, it would be, it's an important consideration for us to consider aligning. If this is where the District 120 is going, I think it would make sense for us to align with them. Because I think otherwise we'd be, we'd be creating more problems for our families that might impact them differently with young kids who they can't necessarily leave at home, unlike the high school who may be able to do that. You know, if those families are not quite as impacted the same way, that, that's my concern. Because I want to make sure though that we're minimizing the disruption to both, any families that are in both districts. That's, that's the way that I see that. And while it's not ideal, I think that it might be necessary in order to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our of the family, because that's important piece here.
So ultimately what I would be asking for is your, your interest in me pursuing the calendar committee with D-75, which would be, which would consist of certified classified and administrative staff to then review and make sure that those three calendars would be in line with D-120, but also to the flavor that needs to be happened for D-75 to function well as well.
And then my other question would be, I just want to make, obviously we'd have to, both districts would have to commit to all of their bargaining, you know, collective bargaining agreements, and we've got to make sure that we're not running afoul of any of that. But I, and I would think that aligning the districts as best we can, we're going to minimize that potential for, not like with shared services positions and et cetera.
I think it's worth it to ask for input from like our teaching staff and parents as well. In the survey or?
The calendar committee does have parents, some parents, some staff, some admits, so that, that's theoretically they're the voice for that in order to.
Parents.
That's part of the collective bargaining agreement, but yeah. Because before my time on the board, I was one of the parents on that, so that's how I have that information.
I think we should be open to listening to more and just continue the conversation. So I think that's why he was, my vote.
That's why we're starting that now rather than just, it's not just before us to vote on the final schedule. It's opening that up for.
Right. Just find your interest. So going from here, there's, I have your permission to engage in that? Right, so.
Yes, I'm just checking the same, going down the list here. Yeah, because this is not, this is just, yeah, okay, just gauging interest. My vote with my, my straw poll, not vote, would be to, to pursue that and continue that discussion because I can't see how sticking, digging in our heels on our schedule while the district is, 120 is going to have to do their thing for construction. I don't see how that benefits the student staff or anybody, so.
I mean, our kids are moving that way at the point.
Especially for the families that have multiple kids, but definitely for any of the kids transitioning up. Again, I just don't, I can't see any positives to maintaining and digging in our heels just to maintain.
Is anybody opposed to it?
There you go.
There you go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Superintendent's office.
First item for your consideration, it's time for the board to re-up their board meeting calendar. So what we have presented before you for action tonight is to maintain your board meeting dates and times the way that you have this previous year. So maintaining them on either the third or fourth Tuesday of the month, 6:30 start timing. This is the time that if you did want to change it, for you as a board to have that conversation.
Six thirty.
Tuesdays are never good for my family, but we have made it work thus far. I'm not looking to change it now. I think it is. I don't like the idea of switching it. I mean, we could, we could try, but the problem is, is what we've got to think about is because our incoming superintendent is going to have to do a meeting at each district by keeping it, assuming 120 is going to keep theirs. On Tuesdays, you know, I like the consistency for the benefit of our superintendent and the staff who are shared services and working with both.
I agree. Tuesdays are fine. I'm just wondering, can we start a little bit earlier?
I was going to ask a six to early.
Start at six o'clock? Instead of six thirty? Are we tied to six p.m.? All right, six thirty.
I'm open to six.
It, it does not matter. That part doesn't matter to me, so.
We should be able to do it. It's more about you being able, more members to get here, so.
I, I'm open to six. I think, I can't go much earlier than that, but yeah, six would be fine.
Six, six it is? You'll make a change to go to six o'clock? This will be the first time I'm doing this. So I'm going to ask you to promise me one thing. If you're going to start at six, that doesn't mean you're still going to keep finishing at ten.
I don't think any of us would want to stay in here at least. So I don't think that's the reason the proposed change was taken. I think it's because some people cut up on end times that they need to, and they don't want to leave the meeting early, if maybe, so.
Totally understand. All right.
We want to add five agenda items to every board.
So we'll make that change, move it to six p.m. For a start time, that would start on July, on the first July meeting. Okay, but the first one for that is also a joint meeting. So we'll have to work through that, okay? But definitely your August board meeting would start at six.
If we need to keep that July one the same time, then it's already scheduled. That's.
Obviously you could communicate that to the other board and maybe they want to change too. But if not, obviously we will adapt on the joint meetings. I don't think there's an expectation otherwise. Long as we just all have a reminder, like where am I?
Oh, yeah. What they call. All right. Next item that I have for you is the seat all withdrawal resolution. So this is something that we've been talking about quite extensively. So this is for your official approval this evening. I have communicated with the interim superintendents there and also the president for their board that we would be sending this notice. The intent is to let them know now that we would still consider withdrawing. We put in the resolution the same request that we did on the previous one, which means we've asked them to delay any decision until January of '26. So that means Corey and Jamie and your seat all reps between Georgie and Eric would come back to you and say yes and at the December meeting or later. The improvements that we're seeing in the type of academic programs you're providing is aligned with what we're thinking. And the means in which Kathy will give you feedback on how they're going to be billing the districts aligns with what we believe is also supportive of what you as a district can get behind. And then at the December meeting, you'd be able to make that decision, yes, we'd want to, you'd want to rescind the withdrawal notice? Or no, there's not enough progress. You believe at that time it's better for you to continue on with withdrawal notice. And then that would then put into place, seat all would then start their process of notifying the other member districts of how they'd like to vote, whether acknowledging to all agree, which is very unlikely to allow. of how they'd like to vote, whether acknowledging to all agree, which is very unlikely to allow district seventy-five oh one twenty withdrawal. But you'll probably promote going to the regional office board right here. Well, the key thing is you gotta keep in mind for your December meeting, Jamie, Kathy and Cory should be coming back to you for a recommendation on this. And that, if you did withdraw, the reason you're doing it now is to allow you at the July first twenty twenty-six, you could be out of seat all there. That's why you're doing it now. Cause if you didn't get it put in before the end of the school year, it would go to the July of twenty-seven. And we've said we don't want to delay that any more than we need to.
This is to fulfill the contract requirements of when we have to provide the notice.
Yes, ma'am. The next item I have up then, wanna review with you the organizational chart. So in going through that, if you remember, take you back two years ago, um, we've continued to look at how we can best function within our organizational chart um between both school districts. So we've come back through now and have some recommendations for you based on that. Really what you're going to see in this organizational chart are three changes that we're looking to have take place. Next slide. So the first thing I want you to notice is what we're looking to do is right here. We've got our boards and then the superintendent, and then we distribute amongst all the assistant superintendents. Before we had a deputy role. So what the recommendation there is to have that deputy role that was singular here, gonna be the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning. So that role oversee the coordination of all the teaching and learning activities for both districts pre K twelve. That's change one. The second change in that is the person that was in this role here for assistant soup for teaching and learning is, was overseeing partial six twelve. That role will go back to being specifically a director role for teaching and learning nine twelve only. It's the second change in that document. The third change that we made is under the assistant soup for student services. That role was evaluating the principals pre uh K twelve or K eight. In this organizational chart, the recommendation is that role does the evaluation through the principals K twelve. So now we have all the principals together being observed by one assistant soup. That also means then your superintendent will be following what I would say is much more a traditional unit district organizational structure where you'll have the assistant superintendents reporting to the superintendent. And then the key function with maintaining the title deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, that clearly identifies the superintendent that will take the place when the superintendent is out of the district. Outside of that, everything else is stayed the same. What I do want to point out in this organizational chart, all these roles are not shared service. So as people look at them, we gotta keep in mind that, yes, the assistant soups are, except for specialized programming. That's one twenty only. All the other assistant soup roles and that deputy role, those are shared. But in these colored, this color column right here, it's a mixture. Some are shared, some are seventy-five only, some are one twenty only. But we're trying to show the structure, at least from a board, the district level of what's filtering down into our buildings. Okay?
Are, is everybody in pink considered an administrator still?
Uh, considered an administrator.
I was just trying to count the numbers in the, the next couple of slides that I didn't, that say how many administrators we have.
So they won't coordinate, these numbers Eric won't coordinate to what's in this next slide.
Okay.
And I'll be able to describe for you those numbers that are in the next slide. But quickly looking, most of them do have administrative responsibilities, but that doesn't always mean they're qualified from what an organizational chart with what's in the budgeting as administrator, which I'll share with you in a second. Any other questions with our organizational chart?
Do any of the changes you're proposing change the number of shared services roles or is it just a shifting around the mean?
Um, there is one shift in that the assistant soup for teaching and learning will strictly be a one twenty employee now.
The assistant suit, not the.
So last, this, this card here, we had assistant soup for teaching and learning. That's becoming a director role for nine twelve. So that's going to be a one twenty only.
But that shifts from shared, so that's, that's a net loss of a shared services role.
Yes, ma'am.
From our district's perspective.
Correct.
But otherwise with those three changes, it's really just a shifting. We're not talking about creating new positions.
No.
Um, it's just shifting around responsibilities and none of these are perceived as demotions or changes, correct?
Yeah, similar changes. And I think one of the things that um I'm proud of our admin team, you should be as a board. We've had some very open, honest conversations with our whole goal being we want to make sure we're putting ourselves in the best positions to be successful and grow for ourselves. And those conversations are what took place in helping make these moves. So some of them, yeah, are changes and they were they were welcome.
But they were welcome as opposed to swallowed. That's, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
So our bilingual program coordinator would be the, if there's none, there's not a a bilingual program coordinator on here?
Specifically? No.
So who would be taking on that role? Is it the?
So Sarah, do you want to describe how we're going to maintain that, those services?
Sure. So as um the interim principal role is dissolved and we hired a full-time principal to come in there in July. The first, the role then had been loaned out from the teaching and learning department. So that role will come back to teaching and learning. And the person has all of the qualifications to support the dual language and the multilingual program based on the job description requirements. And will be fulfilling the role that is currently the director of the listed programs. All of those daily duties and functions will remain an uh singular role um under a director of teaching and learning title. Because that role is in the teaching and learning department already. So we have three directors and we're consolidating to two directors.
What do you guys think about that overall? How does that look for a dual language program? To not have a specific person, even though there are, that person is taking on that role. It's in addition to the other role of teaching and learning overall. So that's gonna.
Except that it's the, they added on the instruction and assessment coordinator. So some of the duties that were previously done by the director of teaching and learning before taking on the dual language duties are now being moved to that instruction and assessment of coordinator without having, it's basically a net cost savings. That was part of the cost savings that were talked about before when in the adjusting. So it's not the same, it's not adding on the same duties to this. If they took away some of the duties and put it on the other person so that that role can do the duties and they do have all of the qualifications for a dual language.
Yes. It's an ESL educator with, who is fluent in Spanish. And so we would not have made this shift if it was not someone who is fully qualified to fulfill the role that is currently as presented.
So if you do have somebody, the instructional and assessment coordinator, why does uh that person doesn't land under the director of the teaching and learning? Why do they land side by side, but not under the director of teaching and learning? So how are they going to be?
They're all under the deputy superintendent of teaching and learning.
They're all under the umbrella of the teaching and learning administrator. Yes. Because they won't be reporting to directly to the two directors. They will have their own duties and responsibilities aligned to instruction and assessment and will be working in coordination with the directors.
Cause part of we can see is the director of teaching and learning pre K eight, who's taking on the roles of the dual language program. The, the instructional, the instruction and assessment coordinator is also pre K through eight. Whereas the, the middle one is director of teaching and learning nine through twelve. So it's, there's of those three pink level under the director of teaching and learning deputy superintendent of teaching and learning, there are two that are doing the pre K eight while also giving the one. So it, it's, it's not doubling up the roles. It's spreading out the responsibilities between the two.
I still don't, I think the intentionality changes. So I think it's viewed differently. Like if I were to look at it, it doesn't really say anything about dual language except if you explain it to me. But other than that, I think we are removing a big something that's very important to the district. And I think it's very important to have that intentionality. But when you're giving that title to that uh director of teaching and learning, I think you are removing something that's valuable to the district and something that really made it stronger. I know it might just be the title, but it also, if they remove some of the, I, I think you mentioned that it was only for a they were uh bilingual certified? Is that what you said? Is that the certification that they need to have in order to take that position?
ESL.
Just ESL?
Yeah, bilingual.
Before it was, what, what title did they have before? Or what um certification did they need to have for that position?
For the director of the student dorms, the ESL endorsement and being bilingual.
The ESL endorsement, but not necessarily bilingual endorsement, but ESL endorsement. So there comes the, the two individuals that we're speaking of. Have um, I can triple check that. I have pretty much a clinical certifications. And then like I hold a bilingual endorsement and a B L and working collaboration and this.
Does a person that's gonna hold this um position now, do they have like a masters or do they have a
doctorate?
And before it was a, an administrative portion as well? Or a certification? This time around it's not the, or do they have the administrative as well? Okay. So it's mostly the title that's not.
Correct.
And is there a reasoning behind the title being changed to this?
Um, continuity of the organizational charts, they all fall within the all of the director roles that we're referring to have consistently fallen in the teaching and learning department. And so it, it is a way for us to ensure that it's not seen as a separate entity, but it is part of our team.
I will say just from, and I, I, that's why I was asking is trying to understand where you're perceiving the loss. Cause I, I'm not trying to minimize that. I'm trying to understand from, from, from where is the loss being perceived? Because I would say, I think a few years ago, we, when, when we created that role, we were still trying to implement the dual language program throughout our, cause we only had it in one building and then it was in two and then it was in three. So it was being implemented and I think that there was a different need for that where now that it's there, we want to continue it. We want to keep working on it, but I don't know that we need to do the same work to implement it. And as long as we're not, I wouldn't want to be putting this like twice the roles on one person. I don't think that that would be making that work. So I, I like the creativity that was employed in order to create this not director role, but a instructed assessment coordinator role to take off the responsibilities from the director. So the director can do the director things. I don't exactly know what all of those are and I don't want to take away from that, but so rather than us just merely replacing the role with, with another person and giving them the same title, that, I think this is trying to be intentional with what the actual job descriptions are for each one and without overloading them by adding on the coordinator role to take away the responsibilities that would have kept them from doing the dual language stuff. That I want them to keep doing.
I mean, I could, I wish I could think uh like that, but honestly, I think the program has grown and is what it is because there's an intentionality. You have someone of a title that is a role that is their focus. They're looking into assessments specific for English language learners. They're working with families with that intention in mind. When you are opening it up for that and a little bit more, or maybe the instruction and assessment coordinator to take that on in addition to other duties. Even though it seems like it's going to connect, I think you're taking away that intentionality, that idea, that objectiveness of meeting the needs of English language learners, which certainly empowers our students. So if you take that person out, that you might not have the same intention, the same idea or the same viewpoint. Um, and also I think our district is saying a lot, just not by not even including it. Cause if we look at any district, they are going to have someone that's very specific um to working with students that speak other languages. So I think you know, making sure that we highlight that should be something that should start from the elementary school all the way to the high school. So that's my only issue with that um, the title and the intentionality not being there and being very open to, you know, just serving everyone, which is really nice. It's creative, but is it gonna be possible? Or, you know, that's what that person brought. Making sure that they were not, and it's you, it's, I mean, historically speaking, it is a population that is overseen. Um, we already know that they are not uh very much heard. So taking it out completely, even the title of it would, to me, be disrespectful to what we're saying that we do in our district.
Is it the title? So i- is it the lack of the, I think that, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm trying to see if there's a way.
But front facing to the community, this seems like that position is not going to be replaced, but the board is saying this is so important. Yeah, we're not going to replace that position. In actuality, it's just the dual language there. It feels very like it doesn't make sense. The messaging that we're putting out and saying that our programs are really strong and robust and we want to continue to grow them into the high school, yet the org chart doesn't represent that. And the community might not understand, we understood it, right? That instruction assessment is its own entity now to take that responsibility away. But a regular community person, when they see this org chart is not going to see that. They're just going to see that the titles are gone.
So that's why I was asking, is it a matter of creating a different title for the director of teaching and learning pre K eight so that it includes that? Or is it the, that's what I'm trying to, is it, is, is that, i- is it the forward facing piece?
Can we take a step back for a second? Ultimately, what it comes down to is how does our staff interact with our families that we're serving? I hear you with our families that look at our org chart, Georgie. Reality is the people sitting in this room and whoever's online are the ones that are going to see this org chart. The families that we're interacting with, especially our dual language program, they're going to know they're valued and cared for by how the person that's leading that is interacting with them consistently. They're going to know how we value the dual language programming by how we continue to communicate in multiple languages to our families as a school district. Ultimately, in this scenario, I look at Sarah, Sarah's got to make sure that happens. That's what we're coming to, to say, we know we had to get creative. We needed to make up budgetary items. And we also happen to have some very talented people that we can utilize that we know we can still go forward with in our programming because we do value it. So I hear you about the title. I'm sensitive to that as well. Knowing that where we are as a district though, and knowing that we have this in place and people in those roles have been doing part of that work already. We wouldn't have brought this to you unless we felt we are going to be able to more than adequately serve. We wouldn't have brought this to you unless we felt we are going to be able to more than adequately serve our families, especially our dual language families. Because we've made some tremendous strides and they're integral part of our community that we need to continue to serve. And that's not going to change.
And I hear that piece, but I also want you to consider how the title or adding an asterisk to those families that want to move into our community. Right? Cause they're not going to know, they're only going to be able to see what they can find until they come into the community and they have those connections. So I, I'm just saying, consider putting something in there that also makes it a little bit clearer. That that Director of Teaching and Learning pre-K eight is also going to be the base of. This particular programming.
And I think that would be, um, my concern that, okay, let's say that, you know, one of, let's say that, um. Sarah has to leave, somebody else comes into that position, uh, for some reason. Do they know this part? I know that you understand it and you value it, but when you look at it, like you said, and maybe, maybe you, what you're saying is nobody's going to look at this organization chart. That's fine, but our teachers do know, they do know and they do recognize that they're falling into the. Now you're part of everyone, we're not just going to be focusing on what specific needs do you need as a dual language, uh, teacher? So that I can support you. It's a, everybody's going to need this, so we're talking about equity and equality and it's huge difference. We already know, I have fun through training regarding that. So I do feel that even that small change would make a huge impact. Um, I mean, there's a lot of people here that will support and help, but there's nothing like putting it forward and being honest and clear about what we would want. Um, and how this represents our district. So I feel like this should be a concern to all of us and, um. And hopefully, you know, you consider our, my comments and, and my additions to, to what I've been working on. I know that I, this is, I'm bringing CLC and my, uh, job in here, but I also want to share that there. When you are telling the, the public about something, you're being very open about it. You want to show them through your framework, right? Through your, um, everything that you're doing behind the scenes, that it's, it's covered there. So you're going to find it anywhere on here because you are important and we are thinking of you and we see you. It's not something that's going to be just merging into everybody else.
I see there's a, in the parentheses there too, is there two people serving that role? So that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
The two are the K pre-K eight.
Okay.
Right, so over the last several years, we've had two Directors of Teaching and Learning. One year, they were responsible for pre-K eight content. We had a literacy person and we had an admin science person. The next year, we had two, the Directors of Teaching and Learning, we divided them up by grade level. One was pre-K five, one was six eight. The next year, we did a combination of grade level and content. So we, we've been playing with the different models to try and figure out the best, based on the needs every year. We try and stack the deck to lean our efforts in one place or another. And so knowing that we now, we have two people. You have two roles again, and we have a dual need and a mono need. Now we're just taking those roles and we're shifting them. We could say Director of Teaching and Learning, Mono Lingual, Director of Teaching and Learning Dual. Like, so it's not necessarily that we're removing someone dedicated to service. That set of language programming, it's that we're utilizing the strengths of the people we have in this stuff.
I think you just.
But I think that's the key is that without reading the job descriptions, someone else is not going to know that maybe one is dealing with dual and one is dealing. And that's, that's, that's why I was trying to get at the issue is the issue that, that, the, the roles is the issue of the title. And it seems like that's the intentionality that would be conveyed by doing that. And that's what I was trying to understand, right? Cause we want to say what we mean and mean what we say, right?
Exactly, in the last three years, we left it Director of Teaching and Learning so that we had that flexibility. To make those decisions in the administrative form.
Make an observation. It's kind of off track of what everybody else is talking about. This organizational chart. You got a Deputy Superintendent of Teaching and Learning is online with Assistant Superintendents. And a Director of Public Relations is online with Assistant Superintendents. So Deputy Superintendent should be higher in the organizational structure than Assistant Superintendents. Even the Director of Public. Relations ought to be a sideline coming direct out of the superintendent, reporting directly to the superintendent. So we were looking at this, the Deputy Superintendent is right on par with Assistant Superintendents. The Deputy Superintendent should be higher in the organizational structure than the Assistant Superintendents.
We did discuss that and the team was comfortable with how we had it laid out because. It's still the same people they're reporting to that have below them. Otherwise we'd have it, so it's sticking up a little bit higher than the other. We thought by the title being a deputy title that it clearly identified that they were the person that would fill in for the superintendent. And then the other part was the Director of Public Relations, it's the same thing in that it's a direct line to the superintendent. So we didn't feel it was appropriate to put it up higher off to the side, um, for the superintendent's role. But if you guys want those changed, Jill will make those modifications. What's that, Jamie?
The, the, our placement coordinator is not in the administrative role, it's a certified role. So to his earlier question.
It's a pink one, but it's not an administrator, that is, yeah, got it. I would think it's the same with this, um. Instructional and Assessment Coordinator, that's probably also not, or is that an admin role?
An administrative degree will not be required.
So you guys like? Do you want us to change the one role for Teaching and Learning to identify dual language in it? And do we want the deputy role moved up a little bit higher and with the public relations one off to the side typically?
I'm not as concerned with how high anybody is or isn't, I think that it's a matter of the roles and who they report to. That, that doesn't bother me. Um, I like the idea of, of, like I said, mean what we mean, our meaning and doing what we say. In order, if, if that's the intention and since we don't have a director role that has bilingual coordinator in it, then I, I don't. I like the idea of designating as part of a title, just to make clear that we're, we are still living a, a dual language district. And it is actively part of our whole district and piece, rather than just a department or something.
And if they are working together, the Instructional and Assessment Coordinator may be put them right next to each other. Maybe so we know that those two will be connected and working together and then we can put maybe the nine to twelve. I know it sounds silly to me, but to me it makes, visually it makes sense.
I'm comfortable with the superintendent deciding where they sit, I don't, that doesn't bother me, but I hear you and I'm just voicing my personal. All of a sudden.
I'm going to agree with the linguistics edition or any kind of thing.
So I'm hearing the linguistics part's the one we definitely want added?
No, it'd be great.
Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
So there is an action item on there to prove the org chart. So if you want, you can modify that to say with suggested J. But no, that that will do that. And then the intent would be to post that, uh, July one. But when it would go to effect and just so you're aware, any of the stuff that you're hearing from me tonight, um, it has been reviewed with Cory as well. So he knew the intent of what we were bringing to the board tonight, for the board. All right. Next slide, Anna. So these are just all the slides broken down, so they're a little bit bigger because I knew they were harder to see in that bigger, uh, full view. Um, so you can see how it lines up, this is consistent with what we've had in the past. With the one difference being, this is taking on the high school principal now. Next slide. This is the deputy role. So what I heard then is one of these roles will have some type of moniker so that it's really is the dual language. Next slide. This is Human Resources, there are no changes here. Keep those two the same. Next slide. Finance and Operations, there's no changes here either. Um, this does designate how those Directors of Maintenance for both districts still. And then these two roles, this one is not a District Seventy Five role. And this still Director of Public Relations is a dual role. Okay? So one of the things I wanted to do coming back today, uh, and it's a transition. And the purpose of being able to show this information for you is so that hopefully you have more information when asked. And when I, when I'm referring to an ask, I've heard it, we've all heard it, people ask. You're so administrative heavy, why do you have so many administrators? I don't know the name of all the administrators. So what I've done, and I did this last year. The ROE compiles a document, they ask all the districts to put in their administrators. To your question earlier, Eric, so in this document, what I tried to do for consistency, because every district has different titles a little bit for roles. I tried to include this, what I included was superintendent, assistant superintendent, um, they did deputy superintendent, directors and coordinators. If the district had any of those titles listed in there, I considered that an administrator. And if it was like a Director of Teaching and Learning, what I'd also try to do is like, see where the salary wasn't at district. To see what's kind of comparable to what an assistant role would be, just to make sure they're kind of lining up. My asterisk is the data is only as good as what the old school districts did for input, okay? But what I could tell you is, this is the second year I've done this, the numbers have stayed consistent. So that's at least some confidence, you should know there, that it is happening consistently. So here's what I did, trying to put in context. We are trying to function similarly to what a unit district is. So what I did is took this unit districts that are kind of similar in makeup. And what we would see is potentially comparable, now there's not as many unit districts in Lake County. To see how it kind of lined up. This side, this is the school district. And the number of students in that school district. Here are the number of administrators that are identified as either a superintendent of some type, a director or coordinator. So when you look at that and you kind of go up numbers, the first thing you look at is we're on the low end when it comes to that. But that also mirrors where we are with our student numbers. So the next thing I did was try to see how do we compare for a ratio of number of administrators per student? So this number represents, at La Keegan, there's six hundred and sixteen students for every administrator of La Keegan that they had listed. Barrington, there's three hundred and six students for every administrator. Round Lake, a hundred and ninety students for every administrator. To where you get down to us, and I used our combined number. It's two hundred and fifty-three to one administrator for us. So we're not at the very bottom, we're about a third from the bottom for total administrators. And this to me is one of the, the best example I could share is how being in a shared service is a benefit. And I have a spreadsheet that I'll show you at the end, I think demonstrates that even better. So first of all, I think from an administrative lens, even if we're a unit district, we're right about in the middle of where we, where everybody else is in the county. Our student number is about right there too. It's in the middle upper half. I think in shared service, D ones for D seventy-five specifically. Of the fifteen administrators, what seventy-five pays for administrators equates to six and three quarters administrators. But yet we get the benefit of all, of both their districts working together. That's significant to me because the difference I use is Wakana. They're paying that love sum for that. That group, we're sharing. So it's not as clean on the next two, but I wanted to give you an example of, okay, the elementary district, next slide. Well, go to that elementary. So here, these were some of the similar elementary districts that we had used and what the shared service committee had also polled, saying that we're similar. Again, you can see our student numbers. This is all the same for us every time, fifteen. But when you get to, is you can start seeing, even if we were a standalone. Just saying we're an elementary only district and we had fifteen administrators. We'd be at two hundred and fifty-three to one as a ratio. And you look at how that compares to here, we're almost right in the middle. When you break it out for the shared service number, we're at five hundred and sixty-two. So what that means is I divided the six point seven five by the whole number. Just if we said we went alone and it was all the kids, and I know that's including the high school. But you can see how it's inflated. I did that because I was looking at Lake Forest. The, the other school district in Lake County that's shared. And you can see how our numbers compare to that. So we have a higher student ratio per administrator. But I think what you gotta look at is, even in all this, we have one of the highest student accounts. But we're right there with pretty much five administrators, fifteen administrators. You get a couple down here that are lower, five, eight and nine. But I think then again, you're looking at the student number for eight hundred students. But I think as a board member, at least you're saying from a unit district perspective, even if we're all fifteen. We're right in the mix. You go elementary alone, we're still right in the middle of the mix. Then if you looked at it from a high school perspective, like before Anna. It's the exact same as what we're seeing in the elementaries. Total number of administrators, it's right on par where you see the other schools at. It's not inflated in any way, shape or form. And the numbers, I mean, you can see how it lines with the student ratio per administrator when you just look at high school only districts. So I think one of the things that if you're approached, especially by community members, you know, we had one come here and say, when I was back in the day, we didn't have all these administrators. There's a couple of things. One, the way we educate our students today and the number of support services that now are in place. For me, when I first started eleven years ago, they've changed drastically for what we needed to be able to provide support. For us. Especially at seventy-five, we have always run extremely lean. And what I mean by that, there was a day and time when we saw twenty percent of our students meeting growth metrics and reading and writing was a celebration. You just heard Jill get up here tonight and talk about what we're going to start moving forward in math. We weren't able to do that before. We're now celebrating fifty to seventy percent of our students demonstrating growth. Because we've got the resources. And I think it goes to what you were saying, Marcela, we've got people in place to take those jobs. That's what's happening from that growth and yet we're still in the middle. Here's the key part, if you go to the next slide. This is the document the shared services group put together. These are what we said were comparable schools. The light blue are the high school districts, the lime green, those are the elementary and the purple is the unit. I, from that same ROE document, all the numbers. What's consistent, Superintendent, HR, Teaching and Learning, Student Services and CSBO, business manager. Almost every district has those roles. Those try to be consistent. So what I did, the average for superintendent of those like districts right now, their average salary plus TRS is three oh nine. This is my current salary, shared service salary is two ninety-six. Nobody's complaining about their salary, but what I need everybody to understand is what's the competitive market. The like school districts are highlighted one. Average superintendent salaries, two seventy-nine and twelve, twelve. That puts, with the shared service mark, likes, six out of thirteen. Out of these thirteen school districts, that role is the sixth highest. So it's right almost in the middle. You go to HR, a couple of them didn't have it to the same extent, this is where I look for salaries, because they're a little bit lower. But for all thirteen, the average was two oh one. The all-in, the average for the like schools highlighted was one eighty-one. Our current HR is right now at two oh eight. Fourth out of nine that have that role. Right in the middle. Kids are getting learning. Average for all of them is two oh seven. Like schools, one eighty-five. Our current teaching and learning superintendent is at one sixty-five, that's eleven out of thirteen. Second from last. Student services. Average is one eighty-three, like schools is at one seventy. Ours is currently at one seventy-one, nine out of thirteen. In the bottom third. CSBO. Average is two twenty-six, like schools is at one ninety-seven. Ours is at two twenty-four, currently seven out of thirteen. Right in the middle. The key part to all of that is, and this mirrors what we've talked about negotiations. We don't ever expect to be in the top. We've always strived to be somewhere in the middle. And what you're seeing is, we're right in the middle to the bottom when we're compared to like schools that we said we are competing against. That's one. Two, those salaries are for two school districts. There's only one other school district that's in the same boat, that's Lake Forest. So when you say, three months at two sixty-seven for their superintendent, that's one school district of two thousand kids, you got your superintendent at two ninety-six for thirty-seven hundred kids in two school districts, that's what you need to help explain to people about the differences in the role. Not only do we have similar to lower numbers than most school districts, whether it's a unit, high school and elementary, but what we are able to do is we're getting quite a value with the administrators you have in place. And to drive it home, Lake Zurich, for those five roles, spends one point two, one point one million dollars. They didn't put them. Uh, Warren, another good cut. Eight hundred and thirty-four thousand for their four role. Those five roles in shared services, just over one million dollars. But you got to remember, we split it. District seventy-five pays forty-five percent of that. Of these roles, district seventy-five pays four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for those roles. Seven, one twenty pays five eighty-six. There isn't a school district on here that can match either one of these two for what our two districts are paying for those five roles. It's not even close. So what I ask you, and it's tough, I get it. It's easy to say that we have too many administrators, they're paid way too much, questioning what they do. Ladies and gentlemen, when you stack us up against everybody else in Lake County, it's very clear. We are right in the middle to the bottom as far as number of administrators. We are more towards the middle to the bottom for how their compensation ranks. And bottom line is, the cost to both districts, whether it's seventy-five or one twenty, is substantially less than any other comparable school district in Lake County. I need to own not getting more of this information out of shared service. I've communicated with Corey to please do a better job than I did. But I'm also sharing this with both school boards because you're the ones that a lot of times get the community members coming to you, asking those questions. And I urge you to use this information to help inform our community about that benefit that we do see from shared services from this stance so that they can hear that. Because that's where it'll resonate. So I hope this is helpful information for you as you might be approaching the period.
And I would encourage anybody to look at this and also highlight the increase in our literacy rates and our scores and everything else over the same time period that we've been doing the shared services. That is not a coincidence. And that's the benefit, and that's what we're doing as a district, I can't speak to the high schools scores and, you know, and stuff over the same time period, but definitely we have benefited, yes, we've added administrators, but I think it highlights that we were under served staffed for administrators in the past, and just because we historically were understaffed doesn't mean we should always be understaffed to keep that history going, that doesn't serve anything. And we have, I think, improved, um, just in public relations among people perceiving our district and, you know, the time, and that's the important part, by doing it without spending a million dollars per year, per district.
Any other questions for me?
All right. For the most fun part of the evening, board policy. Yeah, we are missing a couple of members tonight, too. I'm happy to utilize theirs. I think we can maybe try to give short versions rather than detailed long ones. I think we can all read and we all do it, but we want to give the highlights. So the first two are mine in section eight on fiscal and business, uh, responsibility, accounting and audits, that's a little timely. This highlights the annual audit that has to take place that we heard a perform, a, a discussion on tonight. So this is timely and tells us, um, and highlights the fact, um, all the things that Betsy was sharing with us tonight about the responsibilities and what has to be done. It goes into great detail about the different things that's required, like she said, if you want to read all the great things, you can. And it highlights all the things that she was saying, uh, for internal controls, what has to be done, and what has to be communicated back to the board then, as we heard. Um, and the next one, four ninety, student activity and fiduciary funds. So this is saying that student activity funds have to be managed by the organizations. Um, the Board of Fund Superintendent Designation establishes fiduciary funds to be supervised. Um, consensual responsibilities for their funds, no, you know, they, they establishing the different, um, funds that exist and, and are the duty to, um, responsible, relates back to the accounting and the audits piece pursuant to the state laws and, uh, responsibility there. Ray has insurance management.
Insurance management, so basically this says a superintendent or designee shall recommend and maintain all insurance programs that provide the broadest and most complete coverage available at the most economical cost. This is sound insurance. And basically it talks about liability coverage to ensure against any laws or law, liability of district, they include property, civil rights, damage claims, constitutional rights, uh, death, bodily injury, covering, um, accidents that might occur, students who, uh, K through eight, comprehensive property insurance, workers' comp insurance, employee insurance, and student accident insurance. And if the board shall annually designate a company to offer student accident coverage, but the board does not endorse the plan or recommend that, uh, parents secure the coverage. Next, transportation. All right, so this one's kind of complex. So the district shall provide free transportation for any student in the district who's one in, uh, one point two miles or more from his assigned school. And it talks about if there's adequate public transportation that's not available, then walking takes into account that the considerations for serious safety hazards, vehicle traffic, the rail crossing, criminal activity that might be occurring, um, where the student has to walk if they then are entitled to, uh, school transportation. And then it talks about homeless students and how they should be transported according to the Education for Homeless Children Act. Um, and then it talks about parents can file for space available requests for students bus, or students to take your services on the addresses if they're located more than a mile and one point two miles from the assigned school or where they have to walk. They can establish a waitlist that's maintained for space available for, uh, parents. And then parents, um, shall pay a pro rata share of the cost for all space available busing. And the fee is based on its, and only by the school board. And it talks about the bus routes and how they're determined, and what is, goes into consideration for discharge points safe for the students. A lot of this is kind of, kind of sense stuff with the drop-off and pickup locations. And then it talks about if the family that has dual, um, kids, you know, in different schools, but ride the same bus if they can change locations to get on the bus and ride and, um, no school employee, we transport students. Um, every vehicle that's used, transport has to be, uh, pass safety inspections in accordance with state law and the Department of Transportation regulations. And contracts for charter bus services, criminal background checks for the drivers. And then also talks about, a lot of this you've seen on the news where they have to check the buses and make sure there's no students that have been left on, uh, the bus.
If I could add one thing, only because most members of this board weren't part of the robust discussions about some of this a couple of years ago in the past, one thing to keep in mind about this policy that differs, the board that implemented it at the time made a conscious decision to make that number one point two miles, whereas the state press plus, you know, a sample board is actually one point five miles. So that was something that our districts, um, and, and we, in the past, when it came up, when we were deciding bus companies and whether to share bus routes with the other school, whether we were going to keep that or expand that up because, um, and given how many kids it would impact if we changed it, and because we've got the grade level schools. So I just wanted to make that point that, um, that is something that our policy differs a little bit from the, the typical standard one, um, as a way to serve our families, so. And to assist with that.
Okay.
One twenty? Four one?
Food services. Service offered good nutrition shall be provided in the district's meal programs. Superintendent shall manage a food service program that complies with the policy in alignment with Board of Education policy school wellness. And it talks about food or beverage, I don't, soda students, part of reversible meal. Has to follow federal and state guidelines, US Department of Agriculture rules that, uh, implement national school lunch and child nutrition acts. And it talks about the school complying with nutrition standards. And then it talks about smart snacks rules that offers competitive foods to students on school campus during the day. Competitive foods are all foods and beverages that are offered by any person or organization for sale to students. And the food service programs in participating schools shall comply with any ethical mandates in the school state board or education, uh, school food services. And then all revenue from the sale of any food or beverage sold in competition with the school breakfast program or national school lunch program, the funds are, uh, accrued and go into the nonprofit school lunch program account.
Policy four one thirty, free reduced price food services. This policy sets forth the responsibility of the superintendent to implement the district's free and reduced price food service and any applicable programs such as the healthy meals for all children program. Uh, it establishes the eligibility criteria for those students to receive those, uh, free and reduced services, which is based on family size income standards that are set by the US Department of Agriculture. Uh, it sets forth procedures required to notify students and parents, uh, of the, um, eligibility requirements and the application information. Um, I found it interesting that that same information is, um, is or can be shared with informational media, unemployment offices, or any major area employers that are contemplating layoffs. Um, it provides non-discrimination assurance to protect the privacy of the recipients of those food services. Uh, it sets forth procedures for families to appeal denied applications and, um, or a process for the, the district to, um, provide a hearing for that. Um, it also provides a process for the district to challenge the student's eligibility and sets forth the responsibility of the superintendent to maintain records of appeals if they occur for at least three years. And then there was also a supplemental document in there that had the actual notifications that go out to the families. I also had four, one forty waiver of student fees. Uh, this policy sets forth the ability for the superintendent to recommend, um, to the Board of Education a schedule of fees charged to students, um, for the use of various school materials and activities. Um, those fees also pertain to loss or damage school materials. It establishes the board's, uh, stance on not waiving student fees for extracurricular or voluntary, voluntary activities. Um, it does identify fees, um, that impact students' access to educational services or academic credit as waivable, um, and establishes criteria, um, for waiving those student fines or fees that identify special factors that permit the superintendent to waive the student fees such as illnesses and family emergencies, unemployment, any kind of major family event that would impact their, um, income. Um, and establishes a process for determining eligibility and establishes a process for the superintendent or designee to communicate denied waiver applicants, um, to the student and family to appeal.
And I will do M L A's, so four one fifty, facilities, management and building programs. And this is fairly timely, so this talks about, um, facilitating the inspection of schools, um, review of plans for construction or alterations, and compliance with the ten-year safety survey process as required by school code. Um, they have to be adequately maintained in order to provide an appropriate and safe uh, physical environment for learning and teaching. Talks about standards for, uh, green cleaning, oh, but back, um, prior board approval is needed for any renovations or permanent alterations if the total cost will exceed seventeen thousand five hundred, including the equivalent staff time. if the total cost will exceed seventeen thousand five hundred, including the equivalent staff time. So that's the threshold at which it requires board approval versus just, you know, superintendent facilitating the budget. It says the board will authorize a comprehensive study for the need for construction expanses on annual basis. We get, as we get annually from day of, you know, an updated facility needs and what construction expansion is proposed and has been done over the course of the year. This is also timely with the naming of building and facilities. If we were to want an existing facility to be named, it talks about how we can have a special committee, but it does say the superintendent does may name a room or a special area for a group or individual who has performed a service, as we have heard about tonight. Operational services, 4160, environmental quality of buildings and grounds. This talks about pesticides where anytime they're, they won't apply any pesticides during the, during the school day or partial school day when students are in attendance. It's prohibited within 500 feet during normal school hours, and then they'll notify anybody if they're going to be applying it. Same thing with coal tar sealants. They'll notify employees and staff and families if they're going to be doing them. 4165 is Marcelo.
Okay, so mine has to do with health sexual abuse and grooming prevention. More than anything, it talks about the awareness and prevention such as educating the students age-appropriate lessons so that they know how to recognize, report abuse and grooming. There needs to be some staff training before January 31st to recognize, prevent, and report abuse and grooming behaviors. For parents and guardians, they need to be also informed of abuse and grooming district policies and resources available to them. And they need to receive advance notice in case they want their children to opt out of instruction for creative aid through age. There needs to be some type of field procedures in case there is an incident to be reported and support resources for those of the affected students available to them. I do highly recommend that you go in and read, read it a little bit more in depth so you can get more info in case you're unsure or don't know about it. 4170 is safety. And this is making sure that we have emergency planning, that there is a plan that's developed and maintained, including with local emergency services. There needs to be a required three evacuation drills, one bus evacuation once severe weather, one lockdown drill is part of that. There need, we need to be available at all schools during the day and events. Carbon monoxide alarms also, and leg testing and water sources. There, I just thought it was interesting. I never thought about this. The soccer goal safety compliance. It's interesting. They have to be, they have to go through a safety compliance, right? Ensure that they're not going to fall on anybody. And there is an unsafe school choice that allows transfers in case of violence or unsafe conditions for some students, and it just says that superintendents can close schools for emergencies. The next one, 4175 convicted child sex offenders screening some notification. And on here it mentions specifically that child sex offenders are generally prohibited from being in school property or is loitering within 500 feet when individuals are under 18 or present. There are exceptions, for example, being a parent or guardian attending a specific conference or, you know, event, you know, related to the student. They do need to receive prior permission from the school board, comma superintendent, comma, or designee. And they must be supervised by the superintendent or designee when they are children. There needs to be a screening procedure for anybody that required for all employees, student, teacher, contractors, employees with direct cell contact and volunteers. And the board president ensures that the superintendent under both these checks. So Christine, you're the lucky one. Parental notifications. Of course, the superintendent develops procedures to develop and inform about sex offender information during school registration and as deemed appropriate. And as deemed appropriate. That's both were my three.
I have 4180 pandemic preparedness and health and safety protocol. Let's hope we never have to face this again. Okay, obviously, we have this to prepare and respond to pandemics. Pandemic preparation. So what is the superintendent responsible for? Emergency school closings, board meetings, how are we going to deal with that? Employee pay during closures, remote lending, learning days, health and safety protocols is what is in there. Then I moved into 4190 targeted school violence prevention program. This, again, policy is how the school district is going to work to prevent targeted violence, whether it's threats or planned attacks. It's about creating a safe environment for students, staff, and families. So again, we have four key goals, prevention, program development. Superintendent or designees responsible for creating and running that. Who's involved and what they do. So we have things for district level team, what their responsibilities are. Building level teams, staff, volunteer, and contractors, students, and families. We know that this is not going to replace any medical or psychological profession, professional. So while it improves safety, it can't guarantee a complete protection. The policy follows the Illinois state laws and is protected from certain lawsuits under the local governmental and governmental employer, employee tort immunity act. So the essence is speak up. If you see something, say something. Support the process and stay informed.
I was supposed to have last two, so I'll just give those. So 510, that's equal opportunities, or equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. It sets forth that the district shall be an equal opportunity employer regardless of race, color, creed, religion, and a whole list of things. We go on to a paragraph. It does talk about physical or mental handicap, disability, et cetera. But it, it says if otherwise able to perform the essential functions of the job. And then it goes on to say handicap and disability excludes persons who are currently using illegal drugs, have a currently contagious disease or infection, and whose current alcohol or drug use prevents them performing the job duties. It does say if you've successfully completed or are participating in drug rehabilitation, they're considered handicapped, but obviously it's tied to the job performance. But it's obviously wanting to encourage people to seek treatment so long as that it, you know, it's balancing the two. It goes on and talks about how to do a grievance if they believe they have not received equal employment opportunities, and it sets forth how to do that and to whom to do that. The superintendent is supposed to employ, appoint a non-discrimination coordinator, and it's named here that that would be Shane. And how to go about doing that. With complaint managers also set forth in there how that was an addition we added before with Sarah and Shane. It also employs and talks about how the district will attempt to recruit and hire minority employees. The implementation of this policy may include advertising openings, participating in minority job fairs, and recruiting at colleges. It does not require from the district to give preferential treatment or special rights. But it does say that we will try to do that. Workplace harassment. Workplace harassment is prohibited, and it sets forth the different uniform grievance procedures and it names all the other board policies that would be impacted by this, that the district will take remedial and corrective action to address it. Sexual harassment is prohibited. It defines that and goes through what that is and how to make a report or a complaint, to whom to report it. And it also lists Shane as a non-discrimination coordinator with complaint managers being Jamie DeCarlo and Shane. So it also details the investigation process and how that would go about being done. And it cites the different policies depending on the different complaint that might be raised. Reports that involve alleged incidents of sexual abuse by a child, of a child by school personnel has its own section. And how that would be reviewed and investigated. And enforcement, a violation of this policy by an employee can result in discipline up to and including discharge. If it's a third party, it has to be addressed in accordance with the theory of the board, depending on what the relationship with the district is. And talks about retaliation being prohibited, the recourse under state federal acts. That gets us through section nine. Next month, we are back to doing, again, we're trying to play catch up because we had so many months we didn't do policy. So next month, we're going to be doing section 10 and 11, and those are already, we had previously done those in the in the spreadsheet. And then we will be taking off June and July from policy because we'll be doing joint meetings. So just a reminder. And then we'll have to go through and populate for August. We haven't done that yet, but. All right. Finance Advisory Committee updates. Board other than what we heard tonight? Okay. And then shared services committee. I just wanted to, I guess, update, I will, I mean, I guess you could update on what we have determined.
Emily and I are continuing working with the committees for the superintendent transition, but that's just going to be a temporary committee, I think, through June or July, just to work through the transition and then it will disband. I do have a little bit of homework for all of you for the next subcommittee meeting for that transition group. One thing that we would like to do is prioritize some goals for the new superintendent to focus on in his first year. And so I would ask that you email those to me separately, or yeah, not together, but email them to me separately. I will compile all the, all the goal ideas that I've gotten from everybody so that everybody is aware of everything. And then our goal with the committee is to try to reduce those down to just three. Wasn't clear if it was three for each district or if we were going to try to do three together to really streamline things, but I think we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
Three together.
Three together, okay. So yeah, if everybody could, please share with me, you know, one or however many goal ideas you have for the new superintendent. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, so if you could do that before next Monday, that'd be great. Along with that, we also wanted to identify some must be events to help the superintendent prioritize where he needs to be. Because obviously, there's a lot of events at both districts and both of our boards want the superintendent there. So to help them out, we need to prioritize, you know, like a list of those must be events.
So for a particular time period or throughout the entire school year?
The school year, yeah. Like throughout the school year, one of those events that we really love to see the superintendent have. So again, if you could just send me any of your ideas for the goals or those must be events, must attend events, that would be great. And I'll continue to update everybody on our weekly meetings.
And so even, so just as a clarification, we had decided we had to appoint that before the meeting because they already were meeting and getting together for the short term. We would have Eric and Emily wrap that up as the end of last term's shared services committee for the short term. And I think everyone was generally in agreement with that. As long as they wanted to do so, and they both expressed interest, and so that's how we handled that. So obviously, the new shared services committee will deal with stuff differently, but this is for that. All right, community outreach. Is there any? Representative updates, the STEAM Foundation. They said before we had the pizza throwdown, which is one of the main fundraisers for the year. I would say the the numbers were a little bit down, but it, it's always difficult to do stuff right after spring break. And we head into the busy part of the year for everybody, but it still turned out pretty consistent with previous the outlay of, of, in the current. We haven't had our follow-up meeting to have those exact numbers, but I know the general consensus was it was pretty consistent. So even though it was lower numbers, it turned out okay.
You know, who won best, whatever.
Like it was, I was there but did not write it down. Yeah, I, I know that usually Jamato's wins a whole bunch. I know that Malnati's did win some.
Jamato's got the best sauce.
Yeah, Gilbert's Roadhouse was, they were a new, we tried to get them in a previous year and they, they didn't really respond. And this year they came, and I think they won two of the awards. I want to say overall and something, maybe Kids' Choice. They, they won two of the four awards they gave out, and I think Malnati's won one and maybe Jamato's won the other. That sounds about right. And this year, I will say it's cute. One of our committee members who is very resourceful and, and does all kinds of things with shared maker spaces and various libraries and stuff. She found and was able to use, I can't remember which library. It's not, not local, like Grayslake or somewhere, Gurnee, where they were able to use like a laser wood burning thing. So she created a whole thing and cut a circle of wood into pies and then printed the whole thing and had the award. So it was very, it was very inventive and it didn't obviously have their name on it, but then we just awarded that, that piece of the pie to them. So it was very cute. So I thought that was good. And we had NHS members from the high school come out and help do some of the volunteering that needed to be to fulfill because we figured out in the last few years, while we used to ask each place to have an employee come and sort of do that, they just don't have the people to do that anymore. So we've had to up our volunteer. So that worked better now. Yeah, yeah. See it all.
I have no further there. That's what we discussed today.
Village Leaven. They have a little update.
First thing I want to mention, because a lot of people have been asking about making comments, have you seen like on the public buildings the blue lights? Like the firehouse or the, so the reason for that is April is child abuse prevention month. So they used to put out signs with little blue silhouettes of kids. But the ring and everything kept ringing the signs, so they tried to do the blue lights now to bring attention to it. So they're, it's sponsored by the Lake County Advocacy Center. And they're asking that, you know, people see it, that they go on social media, post for the rent to bring attention to it, that heighten the awareness of what April is and how important it is. Okay, so spring cleanup is the weeks of April 28th and the weeks of May 5th. And the collection is annual garbage day. Concerts in the parks start May 25th through August 17th every Sunday, and they're free. Public Works Open House, 801 Allenson, May 17th from 10 to 1. Maisy Among the Line, which is sponsored by the Police Department, May 3rd. Spring cleanup, help residents who need help cleaning up and doing their yards. Libraries having a spring book sale, friends of Fremont Library Friday, May 2nd and Saturday, May 3rd. And there's also a thing at the Police Department Stand Up Among the Line, which is a group of kids at the high school. They're anti-drinking drugs group that's formulated. So they're doing free Narcan, Narcan training with Nikhatza on April 23rd at 8:30 at the Police Department. And also the Police Department National Drug Take Back Day, April 26th from 10 to 2. So if you have any expired or unwanted drugs, you can bring them over to the Police Department and we'll dispose them for you.
Okay. Any board member, now would be the time to voice your request. If you want to have any item tabled or removed from the consent agenda to have it removed for further discussion, now is the time to communicate that request. Okay, none. I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented. Secretary, please, go.
Figure. Bill it here. Hi. Give it. Darren.
Hi.
Hitzky, Epsin, Carl, Epsin, Rose.
Hi.
Lots to vote on tonight. Okay. So I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the renaming of the multipurpose room at Sandberg as the Mark Pilot Room at CSMS as presented. Secretary, please call the roll.
On favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say no.
All right, um I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the audit and annual financial report or AFR as presented. Secretary, please call the roll.
Billater, aye. Rose. Carl Epsin, Hitzky, Epsin, Duran.
I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the proposed guidelines and assumptions relative to the preparation of the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget. Second, secretary, please call the roll.
Hitzky, Epsin, Duran. Rose. Carl Epsin.
I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six tentative budget as presented. Secretary, please call the roll.
Rose. Carl Epsin, Hitzky, Epsin, Duran. Billater, aye.
I move that the Munder, Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Eureka Squared and Number Corner second edition, whatever, as as presented. Secretary, please call the one.
Billater, aye. Hitzky, Epsin, Carl Epsin. Rose.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept superintendent's recommendation to approve the Instruction and Assessment Coordinator job description as presented with the discussed modifications for the dual language and appropriate titles. Or is that part of the, is that part of the next one? Sorry, then I take out my modifications just as presented.
Fingerhead. Billater, aye. Hitzky, Epsin, Rose.
I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Carl Sandberg Middle School, Mechanics Grove Elementary School, Washington Early Learning Center, and Lincoln Early Childhood Center as required safety entrail plans as presented.
Rose. Billater, aye. Hitzky, Epsin, Carl Epsins, Duran.
I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five adopt the establishment of regular meetings at the Board of Education of the Board of Education to be held at four seventy North Lake Street, Munderline, at six o'clock PM as presented. Secretary, please call the roll.
Billater, aye. Carl Epsin, Hitzky, Epsin, Rose.
I move the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the Resolution Notice of Withdrawal from Special Education District of Lake County or CEDOL as presented. Secretary, please call the roll.
Billater, aye. Duran. Rose. Carl Epsin, Hitzky, Epsin.
All right, we'll try this one again. That, I move that the Board of Education of Munderline Elementary says hi, Elementary School District Seventy-Five accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six organizational chart as presented with the modifications as discussed with for the dual language title. Secretary, please call the roll.
Billater, aye. Hitzky, Epsin, Rose. Aye, Carl Epsin.
I move that the Board of Education meeting will now adjourn and enter into an executive session at nine forty-three PM for the purposes of discussing the appointment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body determining its ability according to statute. Those roll calls, so uh uh secretary, please call the roll.
Fingerhead. Rose. Carl Epsin, Hitzky, Epsin, Duran. Billater, aye. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, nine forty-three. All right, and then we'll, obviously, if other people find it, they can't be here, just let me know so that we can make sure that we have a form. Any other items anyone wants to see on future agendas or any other processes? Can you, so I know you mentioned, or I heard mentioned today, the groundbreaking
For at Sandberg is the thirtieth?
Yeah, the thirtieth.
Four o'clock.
Okay, and that's different from the seventeenth. So that's my highlights piece is the seventeenth.
Yes, May seventeenth, pilot, eleven o'clock.
Okay. At what time, eleven?
Eleven.
Yes, and I would like to meet that, but I have to pick up Jordan from Van, so I have to see if another member of my house can do that because So we have to pick them up right before four. But I may be able to try to pick them up and then head over there. So I'm gonna see if somebody else might be looking to pick them up, because that'll be after the musical. It might be possible.
Well, I'll be able to wait a few minutes too.
Well, that that that's my only issue is that Wednesday afternoons, at least for the rest of the school year. Because they changed it from mornings to afternoon. But I, otherwise, I would love to be there and all try. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone had those dates and um and we're all I think we're all clear on the promotion dates now, right? It's the Friday. Friday, the twenty-third. And then the cultural fair is May ninth. Not the second is, it was, so I just, I wanted to make sure, because I was all confused on the dates, and I wanted to make sure everyone else was had it corrected.
What's May ninth?
The cultural, the D seventy-five cultural celebration.
Yes, Friday.
All of you should have received a invite for that one.
We're gonna have a
So it's not May second.
Correct, that was, it was, it was communicated initially as May second, that's why I'm bringing it up. I wanted to make sure everyone had it correct, because calendars all got a little that's okay, we're all, we're all Promotion is the twenty-third.
And is that the high school thing? Like last year.
Not the twenty-seventh or the So it's the twenty-third Friday. Yeah, so I just wa, I just wanted to make sure, only because sometimes I skim those things over. I'm like, I put that on my calendar, and then I was checking, and I was like, wait, that's a different date. Hold on. So if I was confused, I figured other people could be too, so I wanted to bring that up.
When you were confused, I just gave multiple dates to the same events.
I laughed because I told him, I said, do you realize every date you provided in that one Friday update, we're all wrong. But I'm, I know it's not his fault, it's different things, planning and changing and, yeah.
What are the teachers' last day?
Wednesday the twenty-eighth, two o'clock. Invite sent for that one too.
Yeah. Very nice. I don't know, to think about this whole construction thing changed because Jordan's barn is the, well, it is June fifth, and we had thought Maddie would be graduated by then, and now she might not even be gradu, I don't know when graduation will be, if if school's gonna end June eleventh. So now it's like, if, because before we were thinking, oh, there's gonna be two or three weeks difference, so everyone will just come to the barn expo. Now they may have to plan accordingly, like, but because graduation's always early, compared to the end of the school year, so I don't know. We'll just have to see how that is. Obviously, that's a factor consideration, that's just something that I'm like Because the barn expo's been planned already for two years. Four years total, so, but it is what it is. He he gets to do the star of the show, doesn't matter. She understands that she had her time, so it's him anyway, so. Anyway, all right, so I've got nothing else, and so if there's no other further business to come before the board, the meeting will stand adjourned at ten oh one PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?